Hello, it is 6:02. It is Wednesday, April 24th, and it's 6:03 at this time. I would like to open the Mashpee zoning appeals meeting for this evening. First, I would like to mention that this meeting is being televised live on local cable network, Channel 8. Second, I would like to announce that Chairman Ron 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 V. is not present at today's meeting. I, Sharon Segalier, Vice Chair, will be proceeding over tonight's meeting. I would also like to mention Ron is attending via conference telephone call and is still able to participate and vote. In addition to myself, Bill Berrystel, Jonathan Ferbush, Scott Goldstein, and associate members Charlie Reedy and Bob Cagiano are present. In addition to myself, Mary Ann Romano, Administrative Secretary, and Dave Morris, Building Commission and Zoning Enforcement Officer are present. If we could, I'll rise to recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to officially start the meeting by opening up to public comment. Does anyone have public comment regarding to anything not related to any of the agenda items listed tonight? If yes, please check in with Mary Ann, the Board's Administrator Secretary, and you may have three minutes to speak on your topic. Nothing. All right, seeing that, Bob, would you read the first new hearing for tonight?
Five Clamshell Lane owner, Jeanie Scioli, requests a modification of an issued special permit, SP dash 2021 dash 50, under 174 dash 17.1 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming single-family structure on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 119 parcel 66, Mashpee, Mass. The special permit was issued and approved on September 22nd, 2021.
Voting on tonight's hearing will be, this hearing will be Bob. Okay, it does, it's the regular four board members. Is anyone here to speak, five clamshell? Come on up.
I understand what you have, Jeanie Scioli, she owns the property, she's my wife. She put in a ten tonight. She did provide a letter, though, David, March the 18th, 2024, where she speaks to circumstances surrounding aging parents and the need for her to, and the need for her to take care of them over the last couple of years. It's caused delays in the project and she's requesting an extension.
Should we read the letter in?
Okay, Bob, can you read the letter in?
Let's see, okay. To the board. With this letter, I respectfully request an extension of the special permit for the property located at five Clamshell Lane, Mashpee, Massachusetts. The current permit expires October 18th, 2024. Since the date of insurance in September 2021, I have been unable to commence construction for the approved project due to circumstances surrounding the care of my elderly parents. Both experienced extended complications from COVID, followed by heart and hip replacement surgeries for my father. My mom struggled with increasing complications from diabetes and heart issues. During this time, it was necessary for me to manage their care at their home off Cape as my current home did not accommodate relocating them. As you can imagine, my focus has had to be exclusively on their journey back to health. I was unable to manage that along with many of aspects of the approved project. I am happy to share that they are both doing well and my plan is to begin the project in the fall of 2024. Once completed this property, will allow me to bring one or both to the Cape. Thank you very much for your consideration of my request. Sincerely, Jeanie Scioli.
Do you have anything else?
No, other than that, the permit's already been extended by conservation for three years. So we don't specify a timeframe here, but we'd like to at least have an extended issue.
Charlie, can you read in the department comments, please?
Yeah, the motion has an extension date, Scott. Should we put an extension date that you can work with?
Yeah, so what, I guess what you need to question is can we have a two-year extension?
Sure. So the extension date is?
I wasn't sure, is it from tonight or is it from?
Whatever you.
David?
I would say to when it lapses, because it's still currently in effect. I would say that it is up to discretion of the board. I'm not aware of any timeframe that an extension can be, but I just would, you know, say that the board should be consistent with how they give these extensions.
Why don't we say two years?
The letter says the current permit expires October 18th.
So I would say it's from, from October 18th.
Is that the correct date, if you believe?
That's what I would.
So why wouldn't it just extend it from that date?
Yeah, so two years from the 18th, that's what I'd say.
Mm-hmm.
But can we read conservation in first?
Sure.
Yeah, board comments, we need to read in board comments.
Oh, even with the extension?
Yeah.
Okay. You want to play?
I got it right here.
Conservation?
Yeah.
You have it?
I got, I got it. Conservation, five clamshell lane. This project was issued in an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission on 7/13/2021. The order was recently requested to be extended for the additional three years. Orders are now valid up to July 13th, 2027. Board of Health, the existing dwelling is a three-bedroom, but four primary bedrooms are proposed. Floor plans have been reviewed and are compliant for four bedrooms. A new septic is proposed for four bedrooms. The proposed septic is compliant for four bedrooms. A Mashpee licensed septic installer shall obtain a permit to install the septic prior to issuance of the building permit. Septic plan was approved 7/121 for conventional system. If there is any changes in the plan, then new septic would have to be, meet today's standards of IA technology. So I'm not sure if that needs an extension or not.
That means if he makes any changes to the bedroom or the scope of the job, that he would have to go back.
All right, so that, that approval's good if it gets extended.
Correct, if you keep the same exact proposal.
So I was, so I talked to Mary Ann about this. That's not what he meant. So what do you, because I talked to him. What he means is that if, if a change in the dwelling drives a change in the septic plan, then he wants the system brought to an AI. So if you, so I said to him, so if Jeanie decides she wants to change a doorknob, that's a change in the plan, right?
Well, not really, because no.
If Jeanie decides she wants to make it a three-bedroom or one-bedroom, but she's willing to put this four-bedroom system in. What he meant to write was that as long as we don't modify, Cape and Islands doesn't modify the plan for the septic system, he's fine.
We need that.
It's not the building, it's the septic system, but he doesn't really say. The plan means the plan of the septic.
I think he's correct, but.
We need that.
Yeah, there needs to be some writing.
But we're not voting on that now, anyway.
Correct.
We're voting really on the extension.
So when it comes back, that should probably, Board of Health should straighten out their comments.
Just for the record, the special permit number is SP dash 2021 dash 50.
Are there any comments from the audience? Does anyone want to?
Can we condition with the extension that Board of Health reevaluate the comments?
Approval at the permit?
Yeah, just so we can get through the extension.
What do you want that, the condition to be with the Board of Health?
That the Board of Health will.
Reevaluate their position.
Reevaluate their, their, their comments from today.
Okay.
So can we word it differently? Can we ask the Board of Health to clarify their comments?
Yeah, I think that's a better way to put it.
Because I, I think they, I would like them to do that in case anything happens to me and she wants to proceed, she wouldn't know what to do, so.
Yeah, I think that's a fair.
That's fair.
Okay.
And is that the responsibility of Jeanie to get them clarified or us together? Or how would that happen?
I think you'd need to go to Board of Health.
I think you should probably just maybe call Board of Health tomorrow and say, hey, for the next meeting, you're going to need to.
Send something in writing to Mary Ann.
Just change your comments or adjust your comments or.
What would be the next meeting, though?
I don't know about that.
Whenever they want.
Whatever who wants.
But are we just voting to extend the permit?
Yeah.
So isn't that, that the Board of Health would just be under Dave, wouldn't it?
It would go through them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm getting a continuance.
Yes.
I'm thinking we're continuants.
No, we're.
No, 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 this is.
There's not going to be another meeting, it's just, yeah, so.
Yeah, no.
I would just say, the condition is on near approval.
Board of Health's clarification for approval. Because he's not going to sign up for the billing permit.
Correct.
If when you apply for your permit, he's not going.
He's extending.
Yeah, okay.
That's it.
Scott, are you okay with October 2027?
That's Blaze, I'm Scott.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And now Conservation said that they, they were given additional three years.
Yeah, Conservation's always three years.
Right, so you're, you're requesting two years?
Yeah, that's how ours are.
Yeah, well.
I mean, I don't know, do you?
I just, I just want to clear that up.
Do you issue them for two, do you extend them to three?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Conservation has extended.
Conservation is different than us.
I understand, yeah.
So.
Well, that's why, I mean, that's, I would advise being consistent.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because you get, you know, the next extension, you know, you, you don't want to overextend all these permits.
Well, that's what, that's what 2027 is, that's consistent with, yeah.
So we can, we can do that?
Yeah.
We can make it three years?
I think we can amend it.
I think it's totally under your discretion, you probably give them 10 years. But if, but if you give them 10 years, you might be giving everybody else who has one for 10 years, you know.
And Conservation's good with three years.
I think we just amend it to extend the same date that Conservation has extended.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay.
Totally up to the board.
Would someone like to make a motion to close public comment?
I make a motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Public comment is closed. Charlie, would you like to make a motion regarding this application?
All right, to make a motion relative to five clamshell lane owner Jeanie Scioli requests a modification of an issued special permit, SP dash 2021 dash 50, under 174 17.1 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming single-family structure on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 119 parcel 66. Mashpee, Mass, a special permit was issued and approved on September 22nd, 2021. Number one, the board accepts the request for extension of the special permit, SP 2021 dash 50, with a new extension date, too, and including October 2027. And number two, conditioned on the Board of Health reviewing and clarifying the comments previously issued to the zoning Board of Appeals.
I just want to clarify one thing. You had mentioned October 27th.
Right.
Conservation's is till July of 27.
That's because it's different.
But I thought we were, I thought we were changing.
We want to keep it consistent.
I thought we were trying to keep it consistent.
We are, they, they issued their permit.
Oh, in July.
It's in July, and we issued ours, yeah.
Okay, so we'll need this before we get to it.
Yep.
All right, so the October is good.
Okay.
Yep.
October of 27.
Yep.
As I know, they don't.
All right.
Okay.
Just dotting out.
I guess we're all set, then.
I'll second.
So moved?
Second.
Second.
John's second.
John's second, okay. Joe, I mean, Bob, how do you vote?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Um, Bill?
Yes.
And I'm yes.
Very good.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much, and I think Jeanie would say the same, if she is here.
Charlie, you're going to sit in the next hearing.
Could Ron not vote if he's?
Ron, I guess, could vote.
Oh, he can't sign.
He can't sign the form.
Oh, yeah, good point.
I'm fine, I don't need to vote.
He's listening.
You eavesdropping?
I'm not used to going through a whole.
I certainly am.
Sounds like the wizard.
I'm not used to going through a whole hearing without hearing Ron.
Got to find my right place.
They worked the books out.
They need to get.
Redo the form.
What they need to do is, like, have someone somewhere else in the building and work it out that way.
Either that or specific step-by-step instructions. You know, the old story.
Make sure you get the right line.
Yeah.
Come in, babe.
Come in.
Yes, right down the line.
Charlie, would you like to read in our next new hearing?
Sure, sure. Second on the new hearing list for this evening is 21 Debbie Lane. Owner Donald R. Cassidy requests a written finding under 174 17 and 174 33 of the zoning bylaws to allow for an 840-square-foot attached two-car garage, an expansion of an existing front porch that is within the 50-foot setback to wetlands and property located in an R3 zoning district, map 125 parcel 187, Mashpee, Mass.
Hello.
Hi.
Good evening, board members. For talking, I'd like to thank Mary Ann and Dave for helping. And the board members for their time to hear my comments. So what I'm hoping to do is just add on to an existing front porch, redeck it, and build a farmers' porch. As per plans that Cape and Islands get this. Plan that was recently approved, not recently, back in 2021, for the exact same home, the exact same location, but rules change. So we had to redo the garage and the farmers' porch to comply with device changes. So it's already been approved once. I built the home, put the foundation in, never noticed that it was too close to the road. And went to add the farmers' porch in the garage later and then found out that I wasn't 40 feet off the road. So I'm requesting a written, um, I'm sorry.
A very.
Finding. He's really, he's, um. To clarify, I would say that all the setbacks meet zoning requirements except for setback to wetlands.
Are you in the wetlands 100%?
I'm sorry, I'm really hard at hearing.
Are you in the flood zone or the wetlands?
I'm in the flood zone.
So it looks like it's 100%. Okay, Conservation issued an order of conditions, right?
Right.
Do we have comments from Conservation?
We have Conservation and Board of Health.
Board of Health. All right. Board of Health relative to 21 Debbie Lane. Septic and back, no plumbing or habitable space in garage or above garage, no increase in bedrooms. Conservation. Relative to 21 Debbie Lane. This project was issued in order of conditions by the Conservation Commission, approving the proposed farmers' porch and garage. Mitigation plantings to be provided by the property owner to address a violation of removal of four to five trees, four to five trees on the property without Concom approval. Per, and this was a separate issue from the proposal and is being complied with by the property owner, close per.
I don't know, but certainly, yes, for clonification. The front end setback.
Is what?
Front, it's the front setback.
It's going from 40 to 5 to 36.
40.5. So it's going closer than 40 feet.
Yeah.
Correct. It's a, it's a required egress, so they're allowed four feet. The, the foundation is 40 feet, exactly, 40 foot, 40 foot, 40 foot six inches. So in the design dictates the allowance for the, um.
So it's, it's an allowed allowance?
It's an allowed, it's allowed, you're allowed for a required egress to encroach the deck four feet into setback. Stairs are exempt.
Which is what they're asking for?
That's where they are, so they do.
Stairs are exempt.
They actually, they actually meet the requirements of the front setback.
I've never heard that one before.
Pretty good.
Good to know.
It's, it's in the footnote, so. It, the setback is to the house, it's 40 feet.
Sorry.
Again, it, it kind of, the design dictates the, the exemption because it would be straight and then that would, that would create.
That wood landing's existing in the middle.
Uh-huh.
The, the additional, that wood landing in the middle is, is, is existing in, in the shaded areas, so they're not making it any more non-conforming.
Correct.
Gotcha. If they, if that landing wasn't there, then they wouldn't be able to do this, would they? That existing landing in the middle?
I think they would for the egress.
You know, because that, that landing is more than 36 feet, so, yeah, they would be creating a new. If it wasn't a required egress, they would be, they would be creating a, a new nonconformity, but they're not because of that. And the design is, is designed because of that.
So they're just extending that existing condition.
Again, and I'm, you know, and I would call it a required egress.
Because that's a big.
So it, yeah, I mean, you can, it can, you know, you can interpret it a different way, but that's my interpretation, so.
You wouldn't be able to have like a roof over like a farmers' porch.
Exactly, that's why it's not there.
Okay.
Okay, so.
That's why the design doesn't make, yeah, makes that corner that way. Again, did he have to do that? That's, that's totally up to them, but it, it does conform to the land space, the land space exemption.
What page is that on?
It's, um.
53.
It's footnote, I believe 19, John.
What page?
I'm on 56, so it'd be 57. All right, chimney projections, house overhangs, roof. Open decks and platforms for egress projecting no more than four feet, footnote 19. So it does conform. So what we are looking at is the existing nonconformity to setback to wetlands, which is 174 33.
You said four feet, but because the existing was six feet, you're staying with six feet.
It wasn't six feet. What do you mean, four feet? What, this, this was completely conforming and it still is.
Oh, I think this edition was, while looking at these plans, it says, am I looking at the wrong plan? This says six feet. That looks like more than four feet to me, but there's no, there's no measurement on here unless you do the math.
Well, if you look at the front setback, they're, they're encroaching at four feet, which they're allowed to do.
Okay, I'm just looking at the.
Yeah, this says six feet.
Six feet, the house plans.
Yeah, I mean, it's six feet in, in some spots, but it tapers down.
Okay. I thought you said.
To stay within those setbacks.
Oh, to stay within the, yeah.
I mean, I didn't design it, but it does.
Okay, I follow you now, I got you now.
You know, I mean.
I got you now, yeah, the four feet.
And it's an open deck, which is allowed.
Yes, I got you.
Got it.
As long as you stay within that, I got you.
All right.
Just getting clarification. I'm good.
Okay, you're good?
I have one question about May.
Yep.
So is the roof allowed? Right now, I'm not planning on doing anything.
No, it's an open deck, so from that point, the deck, the roof can't be beyond where it's 40 feet, you know, so.
Correct.
Where you're at, so, yeah, so I think we went over that.
Okay.
And again, you know, it's.
That's a whole different, this is the whole egress thing.
Got it.
It's a big egress.
We've already read the comments, correct? Any comments from the audience?
Charlie, I had condition, no roof allowed.
No roof structure.
No roof structure.
No roof structure over farmer's deck.
Where, where it encroaches 40 feet, where it encroaches 40 feet.
It's an egress deck, yeah.
The open deck's allowed, but the roof is, needs to have, we, the roof needs to maintain the 40-foot setback.
Right.
No roof structure can be within the 40-foot setback.
There you go.
Would someone like to make a motion to close public comment?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you set?
I'll set, yeah.
Charlie, would you like to make a motion?
I would. 21 Debbie Lane owner Donald R. Cassidy requests a written finding under 174 17 and 174 33 of the zoning bylaws to allow for an 840-square-foot attached two-car garage, an expansion of an existing front porch that is within the 50-foot setback to wetlands and property located in an R3 zoning district, map 125 parcel 187 Mashpee, Mass, with the following conditions, motion. Number one, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass General Laws 48, Section 6. Two, site plan. Project 21 Debbie Lane prepared for the Donald R. Cassidy Revocable Trust, Donald R. and Macrina M. Cassidy trustees. Sheet 1 of 1, date December 26th, 2023, prepared by Cape and Island Engineering, stamped and signed by Matthew C. Costa, professional land surveyor, number 52282, and Mark D. Dibb, registered professional engineer, number 45937. Number three, hand-drawn plans, cover sheet, deck details, 21 Debbie Lane, and page two, front view, side view, flood foundation details at garage, foundation wall with breakaway, panel detail plan drawings, SKS dash 1G, stamped and signed by Michelle C. Tudor, PE, dated 8/25/05. Condition on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Conservation Department and Board of Health comments. Roof to maintain 40-foot setback. The board finds that the proposed project under 174 dash 17 and 174 33 is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing nonconforming structure or used to either the town or the neighborhood.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Was I supposed to do work off?
There we go.
Oh, look at, we got.
Good luck.
Good luck.
I don't know if I like seeing myself.
Maybe I'm doing that on purpose. I'm doing that on purpose. Sharon, I'm going to step down on the voting on the next one.
Okay. Both of them are voting, yeah.
We need your signature. We need your signature.
Charlie.
No, just ink. Pour it in.
Bob, would you like to read in the next new continued hearing?
Yes, Seventy Alma Road. Previous notice of intent application was withdrawn without, for just, for just...
Regist.
Yes. A new notice of intent was filed for the commission's May ninth meeting.
That's Seventy Alma?
You need to read the continued...
Seventy Alma.
Seventy Alma.
Wasn't that seventy?
You read the letter, I think, didn't you, not the motion?
Sorry. Here we go. Seventy Alma Road, petitions Patrick and Julie McNamara request special permit under one seventy-four dash seventeen, one-one and one seventy-four dash thirty-three of the zoning bylaws to raise a pre-existing non-conforming single-family structure and replace it with a new single-family structure on property located on the R-three zoning district and the papanese overlay district map one-seventeen parcel one-sixty-one, Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record, Harry F. Slezewas. I think that's it, and Marilyn T. Slezewas, evocable family trust, continued from March thirteenth, March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four.
Do we have a letter on this one?
We have a letter from Attorney Corrane.
Yes. Can someone read the letter from Attorney Corrane?
I've got it right here, if you want. April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, a letter from Attorney Christopher Corrane to Mr. Bonvey, Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals, relative to Seventy Alma Road. Dear Chairman Bonvey, as you know, we represent the owner of the property referenced above. Hereby requested that the hearing rescheduled for April twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four be continued to May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four, as the applicant's notice of intent application is still pending before the Conservation Commission. Thank you for your attention.
We have time, Mary Ann?
Yes, we have a signature, I need to know who's sitting in on this.
Everybody but Scott.
Okay.
Charlie, can you make a motion regarding this extension?
Sure. A motion relative to Seventy Alma Road that the hearing scheduled for April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four be continued to May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four at the request of the applicant and counsel for the applicant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I like them better down there. I can see it better.
The TVs?
Yeah.
What is it usually?
It used to be up there.
Yeah, but we used to not be able to see ourselves.
Yeah, this is much better.
We're only looking at me.
I think that's what...
Nothing wrong with that.
Was that, was that Bob or me?
You both sat on it.
Oh, we did, oh, that's right.
Scott stepped in.
I have to change, I have to change the date on that to May twenty-second.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Did it say the twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
It's the twenty-second.
No, I wrote that.
Okay, his letter said the twenty-second, I just misread it. There you go.
I own both TVs, Sharon.
Yeah. Bob, would you like to read in the next new continued hearing?
Okay, I'll get it right this time.
Okay. I gave the second shot.
Four-twenty-four Monomoskoy Road. Did I say it right?
Four-twenty-four.
Owners Max H. and Lisa White request a special permit under one seventy-four dash seventeen point one, one seventy-four dash thirty-three of the zoning bylaws to raise a pre-existing non-conforming single-family structure and replace it with a new single-family structure on property located in R-three zoning district map one-twenty-four parcel fifty-five, Mashpee, Mass., continued from March thirteenth, March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four.
Bob, there is a letter from Christopher Corrane.
Mm-hmm. A letter to Mr. Bonvey from Mark and Lisa White, twenty-four twenty-five Monomoskoy Road. Dear Chairman Bonvey, as you know, we represent the owner of the property referenced above. It is hereby requested that the hearing rescheduled for April twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four be continued to May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four, as the applicant's notice of intent application is still pending before the Conservation Commission. Thank you for your attention, very truly yours, Christopher J. Corrane.
Again, is that the correct date?
Yep, May twenty-second.
Okay.
Bill, you have no other comment? No? Okay, we have the time.
Oh. Do we have time?
Yeah.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I didn't catch on.
She's picking on you.
I know. I can take it.
So today's date is four-two-four-two-four.
After the meeting, I have to tell you something funny about a date. You're gonna die laughing.
Yeah, literally.
Dave will enjoy it, too.
There you go, Scott.
Charlie, would you like to read in the next continued hearing?
I will. The last continued hearing scheduled for this date is relative to fourteen Capston Circle. Owners Robert P. McDonald, Jr. and Tracy A. McDonald request a special permit under one seventy-four seventeen point one and one seventy-four thirty-three of the zoning bylaws to raise a pre-existing non-conforming three-bedroom, single-family dwelling and replace it with a new three-bedroom, single-family dwelling on property located in an R-three zoning district map one-eleven parcel one-o-one, Mashpee, Mass., continued from March thirteenth and March twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four.
Charlie, there's a letter. Would you like to read that in?
A letter from Attorney Christopher Corrane.
Recording in progress.
Okay.
It's good to know.
It's good to know, Charlie, you're being recorded.
Oh, okay. Relative to Christopher Corrane's letter to Mr. Ronald Bonvey dated April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, concerning fourteen Capston Circle. Dear Chairman Bonvey, as you know, we represent the owner of the property referenced above. It is hereby requested that the hearing rescheduled for April twenty-fourth, twenty-four be continued to May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four, as the applicant's notice of intent application is still pending before the Conservation Commission. Thank you for your attention.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have time?
It's getting old, Bill.
Yeah.
Real old.
They keep getting continued. Now we know what our view is, see. Charlie, would you like to read in the new, next other business?
Okay, let me just get my indie-dandy guide here. Other business approved, meeting minutes dated April tenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next other business?
And the other business is twenty-nine forty-one Echo Road status report from building commissioner and fire chief regarding permitting. Board to make determination and vote whether or not the permit can continue. And we received a letter from Dave relative to that.
I have any action?
No.
Yeah.
Memo to the Zoning Board of Appeals from Dave Morris, building commissioner, April twenty-two, two thousand twenty-four, relative to twenty-nine and forty-one Echo Road Triple M. status report. On April twenty-two, two thousand twenty-four, Fire Chief Jack Phalen, Deputy Fire Chief Joe Pelletier, Lieutenant Lenny Goldman and myself met with the general contractor and representatives of Triple M. at their site on Echo Road. Our inspections confirm that work has been done to remove the temporary structures that are permitted and scheduled for demolition on Monday, April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four. Also, life safety issues such as sprinkler systems as required are being addressed. Chief Phalen and I are in agreement that Triple M. will fulfill all necessary zoning requirements during the time allotted on the modification and will receive the CO necessary to submit to the Cannabis Control Commission, respectfully submitted, David Morris, building commissioner and fire chief, Jack Phalen.
Does anyone have anything to contribute? We gotta vote on whether this permit is gonna continue.
Nothing to comment.
Ron, you have any?
I have a question.
Okay, Ron.
Is there a date certain that David and the fire chief want to insert back into the special permit?
Dave? Well, it is currently for the end of May, which is May thirty-first, I believe, and we're confident with that, Mr. Chairman.
So you're okay, all right, so that date will remain, so at this point, the board really doesn't have to do anything, do they?
Well, it does, it's saying that, you know, I don't know if you have to vote, but, you know, Chief Phalen, he, he's not able to, he gave his apologies, but there is a representative for Triple M. here, but I think that, you don't, I don't think so, but I think that you should vote, it says that we have to vote to whether to continue this permit.
Well, I leave that up to Sharon. I'm okay with the fact that David feels confident and the fire chief feels confident. I'm okay with its application, Sharon, whichever way you want it to go.
So is there, is there an end date on this, May thirty-first?
May thirty-first.
No, I think we should include that in the vote.
In the motion.
Yeah, so we'd want a motion to get...
We're gonna continue it, extend it to...
To May thirty-first.
May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
Yeah, I think, well, that was the cutoff date that we agreed upon before.
To continue the, yeah, to continue this.
To extend it.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Yeah, what does it say?
Did you say we already extended?
To agree to the extension that was, that was permitted and the modification. Correct, correct.
I think, I'm going from my memory, but I think the last time this was before us, what we agreed to do is to have the cutoff date of May thirty-first for the permit and to have a status report from building commissioner and the fire...
So maybe we don't have to vote on it.
So I think we have a cutoff date already there. We're not changing anything.
Mary Ann, do you think we need a vote? We've got a cutoff date that we all agree to and there's no change in that.
I think we can go status quo.
Just an update.
All right.
You can, you can vote to keep...
You can vote to accept judgment.
Yeah.
Doesn't hurt, doesn't hurt just to vote on it.
Yeah, make a motion to continue the status quo.
Okay, relative to twenty-nine and forty-one Echo Road, the Triple M. having heard from the building commissioner and the fire chief relative to their inspection of the property and the status of the property, the motion before the board is that we continue on the status quo with the permit, end permit date of May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four continuing to be in existence.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Easy enough.
Okay.
Okay.
At this time, we are going to be entering into executive session for the purpose of discussing the litigation in regards to Anthony J. Lepkava, junior trustee versus Mashpee Zoning Board of Appeals, Land Court number twenty-three M.I.S.C. zero-zero-zero-one-one-six, G.L. General Laws, thirty-A, section twenty-one-A-three. In addition, executive session, the chairman will discuss his findings with the board regarding engineering and peer review. I believe we will be convening at the end of executive session. We will not be re-entering the meeting, so this will be the end of the public section of the meeting for tonight. I'd like, do we make a motion?
Yeah, are the, are the microphones shut off?
No.
Not yet.
No.
Can you make a motion? We have to make a motion to close the public hearing.
All right, a motion is made to close the public hearing of April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four.
At seven, I mean, ten minutes, six fifty...
Six fifty-three?
One.
One. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The mics need to go off.
Off the air?
Off the air, everything.